I have seven o'clock. Is everybody ready? This is, I think everybody we're expecting, so. We all said BCTV? Excellent. Alright, so it is seven o'clock and I'm gonna call the BUHS number six meeting for Monday, September seventeenth to order. And let's start, as always, with the clerk's report and approval of the minutes of August twentieth. Is there a motion?
Motion excepting the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second in? Any additions, deletions, corrections, changes that we need to make to those minutes? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstentions?
Uh, seeing that wasn't, I wasn't there.
Okay. Alright. Motion, I mean, minutes are passed. Communications. Do any board members have communications that have come to them? They wanna share at this time? Yeah, Sean?
Well, at some point, I think we should talk about the, uh, the procedure email. So, if we're gonna do that under, um...
I was gonna mention something during, under my report about it, but if you have something specific?
Well, I, actually, because it was a communication, I think we definitely need to mention it.
Yep. Okay, go ahead.
Well, it was, uh, I presume everybody got the letter. And it was, uh, by a parent who was quite concerned about the termination of the flag, after, I believe it was, uh, after the one and a half weeks, uh, that came down, which is what we had decided at the board level. But, you know, the parent was concerned, uh, the student was quite concerned, it sounded like. So Steve did address that. So, I, I just thought it'd be good to, to mention it.
Well, and I was, what I was gonna say during my report, but I can say it now too, is that, I know that Steve addressed it in writing and we all saw that, which was good. As, as things came in, 'cause it was more than one parent that had commented on it, sort of on a chain. So Steve dealt, I think dealt with that fairly well. And then, um, Ms. Margat is told me today that herself and Steve and Lyle met with the students from the student groups to talk about it and talk about the process and where we are and where things stand. And they seemed pretty satisfied with how that, having a meeting and understanding.
So, for now, is it a procedure, not a policy at this point, and the policy committee will then?
Right now, policy is still working on creating a policy. And what we had decided at our last, the meeting at the end of August was that it would fly for the first couple of weeks of school and then come down and no flag would go up other than the American flag until a policy was in place.
Right.
So that was what we had decided.
Right.
If I'm, did I get that correct?
I think you did. I mean, it's too bad that, that the parent wasn't aware that that decision had been made.
I think there's some ends to tie up too as well. I mean, I got some questions of whether is the whole campus when we're addressing it as policy, or is it started out at BAMs? I believe those students were very emphatic about starting the process and then it kind of grew. And I don't know if that incorporates the high school as well. Um, so, you know, some loose ends to tie up there.
Three of the students that were involved at BAMs last year are now freshmen at the high school. And they were involved in that meeting this morning, this afternoon, I should say.
I would say almost all the students at BAMs who are really actively advocating are now freshmen. Doesn't mean that there weren't seventh graders last year who weren't involved, but primarily current freshmen.
And typically, when we, 'cause this would be a local board policy, when we create policy at the board level, it's for all three entities on, on the campus. So, we try to incorporate it so that, you know, and then there's some procedural differences that might happen because of ages or grades or things like that. But typically, when we create policy, it's for the entire campus. So it would not just be for the middle school or the high school. We wouldn't make a policy. Typically, we haven't made a policy just for one of the three entities. It's for everybody.
Sure. I was just wondering, is there any way to expedite the decision-making process? Uh, that would probably come from planning a policy, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately Ian couldn't be here this evening. I'm, I'm not sure when the next, you know, he needs to schedule another meeting and get that rolling. I know that at our last, the last planning policy meeting, we had a pretty long discussion related to this policy and what this could look like and not look like. And there's a lot of little pieces to it that we wanna make sure that we're not being exclusive to one group and inclusive to another group or things like that. So it's really trying to figure that out. But hopefully, there'll be another planning meeting, planning a policy meeting really soon and then they can move forward. And I don't know if the administration wants that too, so that can, they have directions on where to go.
No, a little communication. An email from the Whitestone Association, maybe their annual meeting. And it sounds like it's gonna be status quo for the coming year, so.
Great.
Nothing has changed, I don't think.
I heard that too. I see that as a communication piece, but exactly what you said, I heard it from another member officer.
And just to remind, wanna remind people what that's, that's about, 'cause there's some newer board members that may not know and for people at home.
Yeah, um, we own two parcels on the Whitestone Village development. And we had been required to pay a yearly maintenance fee. But the, uh, the individuals met and a couple of individuals agreed to take over our portion of the maintenance fee, which was really, really excellent. And so that removed our obligation to pay the fee every year.
Eleven hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, so.
And initially, and initially-
Most of the thing happens, uh, I think, hopefully it'll, it'll remain, uh, you know, the way things go.
And initially, these parcels of land were purchased with the idea of the construction trades program, building houses on them, but they're not really buildable lots. And it sounds like the folks in the, in that Whitestone development really appreciate having sort of just the wild greens, having the wild green space that these plots leave to them, so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, I think it's a win-win for everybody, 'cause we really can't, we really can't develop them the way that they were originally purchased to be, to be developed. And now we don't have to pay the fee for it, so it's, and then they get to enjoy the space.
It's nice having enough our sleep.
Yeah, it is.
And I believe it's three lots.
Three lots, yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Excellent. Anything else for communications? Alright. So moving on to recognition of groups and/or individual visitors, and there aren't any specific individual, individual visitors or groups here. So, is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
Some move.
Is there a second, move the second in? Alright, and all in favor of going into consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, tensions, none? So let's start with finance, building and transportation.
Okay, uh, the committee has met twice in the interim since our last board meeting. And the first meeting was August twenty-third and the purpose for that meeting was primarily a campus tour, which we typically do just before school starts to see the work that's been done over the summer, improvements that have been made according to the, to the plans that we approved and budgeted earlier on in the year. Particularly of note this year is a pretty good-sized project in the cafeteria with replacing the walk-in freezer. Really nice job done with that. There was some outside work, sidewalk and pavement repairs, some painting as always. And we took a tour, went through the, most of the campus and it looks beautiful. And I would like to say on behalf of certainly the finance committee and I'm sure the board that the maintenance staff did a bang-up job, as they always do, getting the school ready, getting everything cleaned up. When we put this project, original project together, fifty-some million dollars, part of the reason it was such a huge chunk was that deferred maintenance had allowed the facility to kind of deteriorate. And it was a commitment by everybody and have followed through that we would not do that with this new facility. And, uh, we've been thirteen, fourteen years now and it looks great. And that's a tribute to, you know, the staff, the students themselves, taking good care of it. And certainly the maintenance staff and the support of the board to invest money for summer projects when we need to. So that was the main gist of, of that. We also, at that meeting, got a little bit of an update as to where we're, the year-end is gonna come out. The year-end is June, July, June thirtieth. Takes quite a while after year-end before we have the exact numbers, but it looks at this point like we will have a small surplus anyway, so that's good, great work, expense control by admin. We've also had another meeting on the thirtieth. And this was kind of a meeting we called together to, as we needed to move ahead on an issue that is regarding the Agency of Education Child Nutrition Program eligibility for what's called Provision Two, which would mean that all of our students would be subject to the free and reduced lunch program. There would be no more, you know, paid lunch, free and reduced lunch. They would, they would all be eligible for both. And that required a board, a motion and approval to authorize the, a board, which in the case of the summer rules, was the finance committee. A motion was made to authorize the business administrator, Frank Rucker, to proceed with the application process to enroll BUHS District Six in the AOE Child Nutrition Program Community Eligibility Provision Two Program. It's a mouthful. Effective October twenty-eighteen and assign the AOE application document on behalf of the school district. And that motion was approved. And that was a time factor where that, that application had to be, had to be in. In, in doing the, working the numbers on this program, obviously the advantages are many. But the financial impact would be pretty much a wash, savings that we have from some of the bookkeeping that we're doing now and going after people, try to get bills that are paid, not paid when they're graduating and all that. So it could perhaps be a slight increase in cost, but basically it's a great benefit and lines us up with, I believe, all of town schools are on that program now. So that was the main gist of that meeting. And in the course of this, we signed off on, uh, some warrants. And they are numbers ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and twenty in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and five cents. The August second warrants, ten, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. And August twentieth warrants, uh, number ten, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four and thirty-five in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. In addition, there were payroll authorizations for July sixth, three hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-two cents. July twentieth, three hundred ninety thousand, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. August third, four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. And August seventeenth, four hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and forty-four cents. So that's the gist of what the finance committee has been up to over the course of the second half of the summer. Perhaps the other members aren't, haven't heard this yet, but we're shooting for our next meeting to be on Thursday, October fourth, um, at eight o'clock in central office. And I, and we, Frank and I just talked about that today, so I don't know if Sean and Frank have been apprised of that.
You said it was Tuesday?
Uh, Thursday.
A Thursday.
That would be our typical, you know, after Thursday after the first meeting of the month, so. And that's it for finance, building and transportation.
Excellent, thank you. WSCSU Finance?
Uh, no rest for the weary. I think I, I was not in, in town during August, was there?
You were not in town to miss the meeting that we didn't have.
We didn't have, okay.
So there was no meeting?
Actually, missed it.
Alright. Planning and policy?
Has not, has not.
Great, thank you. TCC?
As far as I know, it's not met.
BAMs Committee?
BAMs Committee has not met.
WRCC?
Has not met.
Alright, so it looks like that's it for consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Some move.
Let me get the first, move the second in, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? None, great. Alright, so let's move to administrative reports. Why don't we start with the career center?
Sure. First of all, I think at the beginning of the year, we had some very good informative workshops in August, including having Captain Chuck here from the Bradwell Fire Department certify all my staff in CPR and AEDUs, so all the entire WRCC staff be certified in that, along with the two paras that we have and administrative assistants also. Uh, we had a smooth opening of the school year. I think BUHS number six in general had a, had a great opening. Start to the year for us, we had our four sending schools and, or my guidance counselor met with all of the students from the other sending schools besides BUHS to, they're coming from schools that may have fifteen kids in their senior class, so to relieve a little anxiety and let them know the way around the campus, both our Trade and Industrial Center, the PTC, and also BUHS, where they may be taking some classes, and especially the cafeteria, where they get a little frightened of. So, so it was a great, great start for them. Hinsdale started later, so we met with them individually on the following Tuesday after Labor Day. They had to go over the same thing with them, so they got a good fresh start. A lot of anxiety those first days. They may think they're, they're kinda tough, but they're pretty afraid when they get into this building for the first time. So it was a great start. A couple of field trips. Dan Brayden brought the STEM Academy to Line Sync Architecture Studio in Wilmington, Vermont, where the kids were able to explore various careers and opportunities within Line Sync and so did some great problem-solving activities also, what they put them through. This was last week. And next week, the students enrolled in our construction, automotive and forestry classes will be attending New Hampshire Construction Career Days in New Boston, where there's between a hundred and fifty and two hundred exhibitors, various careers from mechanics to heavy construction equipment operators to architects, you name it. It's, like I said, a couple hundred exhibitors. It's a, they probably bring in three or four thousand students anyway that visited over the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth of September. So it'll be a very opportunity for our kids. And there's also a website if you wanted to look at nhccd.webly, W-E-E-B-L-Y dot com. N-H-C-C-D dot W-E-E-B-L-Y dot com, where we do an example of what happens during those construction career days. And as of the last week, when I ran it, we had two hundred and ninety-five different students taking classes at the Career Center. More enrolled, but some of them are taking more than one class, but two hundred and ninety-five that are taking at least one class. And at the last board meeting, Woody mentioned getting the public more aware of the Career Center. So, we have a couple adult offerings that are being offered here in the next month, or a couple weeks for some of them. One is a facilitating, facilitating career development in conjunction with, collaborating with CCV. There, that is being offered starting on November nineteenth. We also have a SERPSafe Manager Certification that will be taking place here. And that starts on October twenty-ninth. Julie Robinson will be the instructor. And we also have, we no longer have an early childhood education program right now, but we are offering adult ed through a collaboration with a few other places in town, offering fundamentals of early childhood professionals, where they could become, earn a child development associate credential also during that. And also, getting the public more aware of that. All of you, before you leave tonight, will have your own shirt from the Career Center to promote us also. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
No, you don't go.
Did you bring your, did you bring your shirt, Steve, at all?
Cross sports schedules.
I just wanted to mention Regional Advisory Board will meet, its first meeting will be-
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday at noon.
Oh, yeah, within thirty, well, I'm, I'm watching and it'll start at noon.
Okay. And I, and I had a quick question. The Construction Trades Expo, does Vermont have anything like that?
They do not have, uh, anything-
We wanna keep those kids, some of them in Vermont.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, not today, you shouldn't send them all, but they are-
There are, there are companies that represent Vermont that are there.
Oh, okay, so it's not just-
No, it's just held in New Boston, New Hampshire.
Okay.
But also for Massachusetts too, that idea.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Alright, let's move to the high school.
So BUHS has had a great start to the year. We, our fall sports teams are off to a great start, including our boys varsity soccer team, who won the fiftieth John Jay Tournament on Saturday night. I think it was two to one. And it's the first time we've won that since two thousand and ten. So that was, kudos to them. Um, I do have schedules, so I'm gonna pass those around. And, you know, students love it when they see other faces at their events and it's just a good, good to see students in a different manner other than in the classroom and in school. It's fun to watch them. We did have a pretty successful open house and well-attended. That went smoothly. Kudos to Steve Rice and the band. The band members actually came in, I think, the week before school started to practice for, um, the spirit walks that they do on Fridays, because the first Friday of school, we had a home football game. So, that was great that they did that. And Mr. Rice actually said it was great for the band members to kinda get acclimated too, coming in before them. We do, on the twenty-first, this Friday, we welcome twenty-one Swiss exchange students and two teachers. They'll stay with their BUHS counterparts and they'll hike Mount Montana Kit. They'll tour Boston on a trolley and they'll do other fall activities around here in Brattleboro. And then later in the spring, we'll send up the both students out that way. And they'll be here until Saturday, the twenty-ninth. And I think that is it. We continue to, we're doing, I think Steve has mentioned prior that we're doing a faculty-wide reading of Culture Eyes, and so we're continuing to have monthly conversations as we read chapters in the book to kinda dedicate ourselves to the focus on school culture and climate and school pride.
Excellent, thank you. Why don't we, that's a question, we're gonna skip over BAMs for the Student Council. And Ms. Margat, do you wanna introduce the Student Council members for the camera and everybody?
Yeah, um, we have two members of the Student Council here.
Are you both seniors?
No, I'm a junior.
Junior, one junior and one senior.
Yep.
Here from Student Council, do you wanna introduce yourselves?
Sure, I'm Alexandra.
And I'm Evelyn.
And we're just gonna talk a little bit about what Student Council has been doing and what we're planning to do this year.
Great.
So, at the end of last year, we had a few plans in place that we were hoping to get done over the summer and then beginning this year. So, we, um, had a plan to repaint the track sheds, because the track was being resurfaced and we felt that that would be a good way to, you know, make that whole thing look a lot nicer and clean it up for the athletes. And so that's done now and it looks very nice out there. We'd like to say a thank you to the people who got that done. We had a student volunteer, actually, who did the painting and got some community service hours for it. We are also have, we also have a plan to put some flowers and flower pots out front by the sign. And we're currently working on getting some flower pots donated, probably from Agway, but that's not completed yet, so we're hoping that'll get done pretty soon. Um, and then the, at the end of last year, we held some meetings in ACE to connect the students with the administration and the faculty, try to get some of those ideas across, get some communication going, which I think we're very successful. And we also attended some meetings to discuss the proficiency-based learning, which I felt was very integral to sort of bringing that knowledge to the student body. And so those were very helpful and I feel like that helped to sort of educate more students than were just in the council.
We also have some plans coming up. We're, um, planning the extracurricular fair for later this month, which allows students to sign up for clubs and that will be running throughout the day. Um, we are also doing Project Few the Thousands and that drive will be in the beginning of November. We are also planning to collab with the Yachts Team run by Mr. Lord to hopefully talk about Long Block ACE again, like we did last year. That's about it?
That's what we got going on.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Lot of stuff, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Excellent. So let's move to BAMs.
Alright, hi everyone. So I'll be the third one to say that we had a good start to the year. I thought it was a great start. We had a very busy in-service. We have a student who's visually impaired, so we had some special training come in and work with our staff. It's really great. We did some great integration, make that student feel welcome. And it's been great so far. We did, you've probably heard me say we do developmental designs at BAMs, which is an approach to advisories and how we kinda structure classrooms and the language that we use in the hallways and in the classrooms with students, common languages. And this year, we, um, I gave teachers time during the in-service to work as kind of cross-pollinated teams, so it wasn't like Team Draco teachers are gonna present something. We, we grouped them based on some data, cross-team, and so teachers who don't always work with each other. And then they got together and planned their own part of the training. So they, they were assigned like a section of developmental designs and then they did kind of a refresher with the rest of the staff, so it was a really great way for the teachers to study the section that they were assigned and then to be able to teach the rest of the staff. So they did some skits and, and, you know, presentations and it was really, I thought, one of the best trainings we've had in a little while. We're, as you know, we started kind of a behavioral support model this year. The good thing is they haven't been super busy so far, because kids have been doing really well. You know, it's kind of started this school year, things are usually a little quieter. Some of the kids who may have struggled a little bit in elementary school have started really well so far and, um, but we're pretty sure we're gonna need all of those people as we, as we move forward. And, um, so we're just trying to kind of figure out how it's gonna look as we move forward. We don't, a big piece of that model was a BCBA and we, we haven't been able to hire a BCBA yet. But, um, so we're doing our best without that position. There's three pair professionals, um, working with Mr. Dotton, who's kind of, the assistant principal is kind of filling in in the role of the BCBA and kind of, he's working with them on student plans and how we're supporting them. Uh, we had four welcome back evenings. Each team had their own little, um, a lot of them did like either ice cream or some type of little dessert social thing. One team did a potluck. And, um, it's interesting, the seventh grade is like really well-attended, packed for both teams and the eighth grade attends to kinda, um, I- I wasn't looking at you. Yeah, just the eighth grade, it was, it was a little less, um, I guess just because they kinda already have a pretty good idea of what things are like, but, um, still really happy with the way it went. And then we'll have an open house coming up on the twenty-seventh. Beams and fall sports have begun, seem to be going very well so far. Had pretty good weather, other than the heat. You know, I've, I've noticed at the high school, it's been, and at the middle school, we've had to cancel a lot of practices. At the high school, they've done a lot of morning practices to kind of beat these heat indexes, which, you know, it's a new thing that none of us dealt with five years ago, or I don't know how long those rules have been in place, but, um, I, I felt like it was a good rule, given how hot it was the last few weeks, it's certain days, it's brutal, so. It's been going well. We're also implementing changes to Skills Block, which is a piece of our schedule. It's only a half an hour chunk of the day, but we've put a lot more structure into it, using student data to kind of inform how we group- student data to kind of inform how we group students and the kind of supports that we give them. And the last piece is, I just want to add, we're doing conferences in early November, and we've met, we've had some meetings recently, because I've talked about doing student-led conferences for, for a while now, we, we've implemented them in different ways, and we've decided we're going to do more teacher-led in the fall and student-led in the spring. It was always a little hard, it's been hard for teachers and the students to be prepared for student-led in early November with, just the start of the school year, trying to get their PLPs together and all the prep that goes into it. And also, kind of a piece that teachers really still want to be able to connect with parents, especially as they're coming in from seventh grade and as they're going into their second year of eighth grade, so we're going to do teacher-led, teacher-led in the fall and student-led in the spring for both grades, and we'll have an online signup system, the high school started one last year. I'm probably going to use a different software, but the same idea, we'll, we'll get it out there for parents, and there'll be a link, and you click on it, and you can see all available slots and sign up for a slot online, and our counselors will help parents at open house sign up if they want to sign up there with help, so. That's what I have, unless there's any questions.
BCBA.
Sorry, sorry, I threw out those terms. BCBA is an acronym for Board Certified Behavior Analyst, so they're kind of like the top person in that behavior model, they, they have a high-level master's degree, and they oversee the coordination, they write behavior plans for kids, they work closely with the teachers on, on ways to support students who struggle in the classroom, because they have a high-level degree in behavior, supporting kids with struggling behaviors. So they're in high demand in our district and across the country, and they've done a lot trying to recruit kid interns and people who are interested in pursuing that at the elementary level, and there's a couple interns that are finishing up here this year that might be possibilities as we move forward, possible candidates for those positions, but, yeah, that's what a BCBA is. So we need them if anybody's interested.
Quick question. How many seventh graders started at BAMS this year, and are there more seventh graders than eighth graders, do you know?
Just have to give me a second to log in. I think the seventh grade class is slightly smaller than the eighth grade. Last year's eighth grade was a pretty large group. Seventh grade, there's, there's a number, one hundred and forty-four. Eighth grade, there's one hundred and thirty-nine.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and if I could sort of jump back, it's always good to hear from the grownos, but I just wanted to say it's really nice that you guys are here, and at the end of last year, Student Council started coming, but there was a, there was a year or two gap, it seemed, where, where there weren't very many students coming, and so it's really nice to hear your perspective of what's going on.
We really appreciate being able to be here and sort of understand what goes on behind the scenes a little bit, it's very, it's enlightening, I guess.
Does anybody have anything in central office? Sometimes somebody passes things to one of the administrators, but I haven't heard anything either, but I just want to make sure. Okay, so there's no central office report. We talked about what I want, was going to talk about during my report, so we're done with administrative reports. Is there any unfinished business? We have nothing listed, but is there any unfinished business to come to the board tonight?
Just net, when Mr. Woodworth was speaking about the nutrition, and it was echoed by Mr. Perrin at the open house, signing up for this free reduced lunch is going to benefit this number once we transition to this new, it's very important, you know, addressing it to the public as well, to pretty much capture the people that are already signing up for it, but apply for it anyways, because it's going to be for the financial health of the school.
Yeah, thank you, I missed that point. That's good, thank you very much. All right, is there any new business for us to come tonight? Nothing? All right, is there a motion?
Ian's not here. What do we do? How do we leave?
If there's no more business, I, I don't remember exactly, but anyways, I move that we adjourn?
We'll second that.
Moved in seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Till October 1st is our next, is our next meeting. Hey, Sean?